...to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic which is famous, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just.
Okay, well, establish corners, Julie. We have the one. Approval of agenda, change of sequence, removal of items.
Removing your removing A, B, and C on your discussion and action item um related to the future policies and the procedures handled. We're still waiting for some information to have a complete discussion of that. So we anticipate reading that through the February meeting with more information.
I'll link the motion to approve the agenda with those qualifications.
Awesome.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Move to announcements. Beginning of the senior representative update.
Alright, so first our updates. We um soon consult all this year help with the winter one nine during the roby lights. Uh that was a day after Christmas, so not too many people showed up due to mostly family gatherings and whatnot. But come out here, it went well and it was fairly easy to handle the parent. And then dress up days, this was the week when we had the two cans ladies score it before break. So we get all the way through the week. There there's fairly high participation. We think that people really enjoy this as something we can do in the future as well.
Our blood drive had been scheduled for February, but we pushed it a few weeks into March because the Lions Club, I believe, hosts their blood drive and has to be a certain amount of weeks in between your donation days, so we pushed it to a common. That was one of the Lions Club. Um for signature planning, we did find out that Khan cannot bus us into their um buzzing logs contracts that they have to follow. So I have reached out to lawyers for estimate and we just need two selected dates to get an estimate from them to find out if the busting costs will be manageable. Um just like the date we have to come to work around state baseball, our boys are pretty confident that they will not miss the practices because they're going to state this year.
Yes.
So we just have to work to try to accommodate everyone and we're probably looking at a weekend in February or May. And then we've scheduled a meeting for graduation planning on January seventeen, was it Tuesday, I believe? And it's around three thirty and it's open to all parents and students of seniors that are interested.
Any questions?
What's the specific barrier, Marlon?
I believe someone has stopped me if he was me. Um he doesn't have the liability for until outside the state. And they will look for people out of states.
Everybody?
Um the interest was for the top both um both arena in St. Paul, Minneapolis, and then a day at all of America, potentially people who extend their if we had time.
Maybe just pictures of the people working in the lights.
Yeah. Did? Did did we ask him what it would mean to give like a one day like like it? Is it possible?
That would be a question in contract.
Yeah, for the.
Okay.
That's pretty, I mean.
So did he say he couldn't because of it or did we say he couldn't because of it?
He 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 won't take any of our athletes or anything like that. Oh, because of that prescription.
Okay, thank you.
You guys.
Okay, and the next is adult school crossing definition.
Alright, so I I was not planning on reaching into our coordination, if that's okay with everyone. However, I did want to recognize um the work that our crossing guards do on a daily basis. And I was glad to see it was referencing a little leather. Um watching the shuffling in the mornings and spreading salt and everything else that's done, but what an important job. Um and then those folks interacting with the kids in the morning too is kind of something that I don't think folks think of. This is definitely tough. I I did think Amy and Nancy are too that do the crossing guard duties right here in the morning. Um and interacting with all the kids when they come in and watching these folks talk to the kids as they walk across the crosswalks. It's kind of a and and let's be realistic, the pay is not something you're not doing it for the pay. Giving up twice a day coming in and doing that. So very much appreciated um the work and the time they put in and what an important job to charge kids with the school. Same.
How many do you have?
Well, we have one official that's not employed by the district, but we have what I was referring to is with Nancy and Amy. They kind of trade off with us greeting the kids in the morning and Amy does chip plates and Amy do the crossing guard duties right here on campus. But those are the only two spots that we have crossing guards at. Am I missing?
I mean, there's a lizard pertaining to George Dura.
Just George Dura and uh and Amy, so and Amy and Nancy, but Amy and Nancy, they do it as part of their duties. But George is paid outside their realm, yeah.
Um could there be any recognition in the school record?
Yeah. We we had discussed, uh Dev and I discussed, there's several options, ways you can recognize them, give cards and things to them, of course.
I'm thinking more than public recognition.
Mm-hmm.
School record.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I mean, then we have good programs.
Wonderful.
Okay, and then um we're going to address the February meeting date.
Yeah, I was wondering if uh we were working on a schedule, if we would be meeting at the Wednesday night, the fifteenth? I'm hoping to avoid the most best for you.
I'm actually gonna be gone two weeks leading right after the school meeting on the thirteenth, but I could do it earlier. I could do it the week before.
I will. Six.
We're looking at one ninety-six.
I could do it Monday.
That's true, me too.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. Well, change.
Well. Dev, do you see any issues with the six?
No, I don't think so.
But you work.
Is that better? Is that is that a basketball game?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving into Monday, six, that's seven o'clock. Okay, it's been a minute. Okay, then move to celebrations. The academic spotlight is the next one.
Good evening, everyone. Um I'm Dean Blas, with the social studies department, Derek Denzil, my partner. I came up with those six, so it's gonna be a home crowd. Who's attacking me? That's my team, so. I feel too bad, bro. Um well, maybe you should. But um, okay, I want to give just a little bit of uh update on the social studies department. As you know, Derek and I are both brand new teachers here. I'm not a new teacher, but new to Pittsville. And so our collaboration's been very good. Um use our Wednesdays, we wanted to talk about our students, talk about how we're going to how we're going to align our assessments, how we're going to uh help our district meet its goal of twenty-one average on the ACT and what are the skills. So a lot of what we do is is in social studies, of course. Lends itself to those things quite nicely. Um so here Derek posted an image of one of the uh nonfiction readings. So we both made it a goal to give nonfiction reading um as much as we can each day. First, we have a ninety-minute or eighty-nine-minute period, so we do have time to do some reading. I often um use the text and we read from the text a lot together. Uh so we're really making a focus to focus on reading because we feel like that's the best way in which we can help assure that we get the twenty-one score. So Derek has um, this would be a a document that he used recently um with kids in class. He ran into some questions on uh along with the document. Okay, next one. Um mention these things, establish common assessment. The the common assessment we are is again, we want to focus on reading. So a lot of things has been taken some scores with our star testing. The first rounds, we look at those scores and then we'll have start testing again very soon.
Next week, Thursday, Friday.
Next Thursday, Friday. And so we'll be able to have some, well, they either have some data there that we can look at, see if if our kids have improved in comprehension. I I personally feel like they do a really good job. I mean, I have been reading a lot too, so I think very good readers. And um you know, it's just a matter of some of the some of the some of the history things, um you know, the nonfiction, a little bit more difficult to read sometimes because there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that need to be filled in. And that's where I come in to help fill in the gaps and connect with Stanford last year. So uh we do a lot of short answer questions. So our our Derek and I have have got away from a lot of multiple choice and more into short answer response for assessment. Uh so again, it's it's, you know, kids take the test pretty serious, right? So they're going to focus them on the writing and the comprehension of the material. Uh because when you say when you say you have an assessment, it's a little higher stakes for most of the equipment that you ever. Um nonfiction reading tasks, questions, put it, okay? Next one. Um I think we talked a lot about the time that it's been very beneficial for Derek and I on Wednesdays to have just that hour of of staff development time um to to compare how things are going for him. He's a brand new teacher, so uh kind of feeding off each other. He's he's full of good ideas and I have some of the experience I can give him. So we're able to kind of go back and forth and up one without another out. Courses that are new this year, civics and economics are my two courses. Um as you know, we've got new textbooks for those this summer. I use those exclusively. I know Derek has uh, he has a lot of, he supplements the text with some of the things he has uh that he's gathered on his own. Uh but I have used the civics and the economics pretty closely and I find that the textbooks are really good. They do like, they said, uh world real-world applications and context, so they're giving a lot of examples of that. So how it plays into the kids' lives. Of course, the civics does that as well too with uh so much about how much they play a part in civic duty, you know? And so we use, we've been been pretty satisfied with overall with the two texts. I use the world history, there's so much, there's so much that he supplemented. He says he's using the book, but he uses it as a uh a backup in a lot of cases. That it? That's it. So any questions?
How many years did you say you had of education for citizen economics?
How many years have I taught?
Education yet.
Um well, I've taught AP Gov. Uh I'm a Catholic memorial, I had taught government, uh I had civics at Amherst. So I would probably say it's better than fifty percent in my twenty-five years that I've had civics, so.
So you've seen a lot of these textbooks that come out?
Yes, yes.
With the new textbooks, would you say that they're an improvement, a step up from what you've seen in the past?
Yeah, because they they try to, kids are a little bit, uh they're not so they're not so just academic all the time. They're trying to give them scenarios and situations so that it's going to relate to them. The book is called, the the original book is called History Alive. So it's trying to make history come alive. Well, now they have economics alive, civics alive. So what they do is they try to relate the content to what's going on currently. And so it's, and these are brand new books, so a lot of what's there is very primitive as far as the new use of the situations and so forth, so. Um I didn't mention that I have, I have awesome seniors and we have the contemporary American problems. What we've really been focusing on there is is perspective and uh belief and knowledge is the legs, the legs in the work in it. What is a belief and what is knowledge? When when does um our belief sometimes lead us into what we think that we know, but we haven't really investigated completely? So we're looking at both sides of issues and I know that there's plenty of controversial issues that are out there, especially in civics world. Um it's not my job to give them my opinion on how those things should be, but it's my job to tell them, to help them investigate and to see things from not to not to see things without a filter, understand that some things are honestly just not not right, not true. And there's uh there's so much out there that social media that we have and I tell the kids that once there's twenty-five news networks on television, it goes away from the news and becomes entertainment. You gotta you gotta understand that sometimes they're embellishing the story a little bit more than. And so to find the facts and to and to make it, you know, make a critical decision under all with their own, you know, with their own understanding of what's going on. Do you know that?
Oh, uh Chris, well, I I commend you for the emphasis on reading, particular oral reading. I think that is a lost skill. Are you folks using that in all your classes, having an oral reading time, like the history as well as the civics?
Yeah, so Derek uses a lot of um document-based readings. So they're short, single-page readings and then there's some follow-up questions and discussion that goes on afterwards. I'm using the text a lot, going through the text and then stopping to explain, okay, what what's going on in this particular section of reading. Um and they're both, I mean, they're both just, they're just different ways of having the kids practice the practice the story.
Right. Um do you have any other examples about the documents? And where they can, I really couldn't see what document it was.
Yeah, like for instance, um the roby wave came up a lot during the summer and the fall. So you have documents that basically it's the it's the core document of the case, the case, the grandeur of the case, how the decision, what was the dissent and so forth. And so we'll we'll use as an example, that might be something we agree we agree to then try to interpret because it's difficult language for the kids to understand.
You're not, yeah. As with many things, there's the concept of federalism, the role of the federal government versus the role of the states. Is that being covered?
Oh, yes. Civics, absolutely. I love it, so.
Yeah, so do I.
I really like, really like, you mentioned how how long you've been, I'm really down with all the reasons, it's the older idea. I guess it's kind of a natural process, you kind of pay attention a little bit more to what surrounds you and who's making decisions and so forth. So I really, and and I think part of it is, to me, if you if you don't understand the government, if you don't understand the process of how it works, you can't really understand history at all. So um and unfortunately, we're so we're working with our spoken sequence to get that being before some of the other things, right? So that you have an understanding of of uh you know, of civics and so that you can apply that to when you start talking about history. You realize that you're really talking a lot about people making decisions for you, you know? And um it's not so much a story, but it's it's the study of the government, you know? And how it how it impacts you. So.
Yeah, I had a question about, um you were saying you were sticking strictly with those sort of textbooks and the things that have been purchased. But for the U.S. remote history, you said there's things being supplemented. Was I using our online portion of it purchased or this is supplemented this from?
So that that is um, that that's probably a better question for Derek, uh but I but I do know that he he has a lot of things that he's gotten from his cooperative teachers in the past and so forth. So he's a, Derek is really, he calls himself a historian and he loves history. And so he is going, you know, he has a lot of things that he likes to use. And he's a little bit more critical at times of some of the way in some of the text presents materials, so they'll present it with in other ways. So to say, I'm not sure exactly what what he's supplementing, but for instance, he had that DBQ that was there, that's database document that he uses that as uh as a starter for class.
So um you guys, I want to make sure that, Joseph, we're making like a major overhaul of social studies construction. And this all in the last two years, when I came in and realized that we didn't teach government purposely at all. We handed a constitution to us the kids that it is to be a chance to study for, and everybody passing, it's like a constitution that's given by the state. It's, you know, anybody can pass it, it's not obvious. So that's the only metric that in the board exam, like thirty-nine exam, I think, is the only way of knowing if social instruction is effective. But you really know if kids are interested in being part of their uh their community when they graduate. If your social studies instruction is effective and if they know how to read the news and be uh critical viewers of the news. So the reorganization was only down through this extension work in middle school, and that's why we moved this kind of time. Um because what she was teaching in middle school has to lead into what Derek takes over when he has a freshman role in history. We're talking about the skills, because you have very different content, because she's been dealing with like New Republic stuff in that with the United States. Uh but she felt like, because she had them as eighth graders, she had to teach economics and government and history all at the same time in eighth grade. And there's so much, and she, if you know the way the middle school setup, then they have it every other term. So that's a lot of look of work on her. And so now with these guys as partners, she's able to focus on getting them through the constitution and the new government. Uh natural understanding, eighth grade, and then in ninth grade, they switch to go to world history, which picked up the narrative from earlier in middle school. And Derek's critique of the textbook is that starts too late and he wants to cover more articulately. And that's where he added more primary source faculty found. And when Derek's a hundred percent right about um his textbooks are wrong. And so they are include the source of information, but our novel story isn't sitting on reading list. And so if you want to kill kids' interest in in history, say we're gonna read chapter one. Um it's really more like chapter one is gonna be our resource for learning about, you know, like ancient Greeks and, you know, and build a group work and things like that. But um it's a long answer saying that he's not going through the Shakespeare poems page by page. Um and it doesn't cover all the history that he wants it to, he wanted to go earlier. But that's spoken sequence work that he's doing with Mr. Blatch's help. Um he is gonna move a little later in time in the world history course next year. Uh and then U.S. history is the same, um that one's gonna come pick up, like instead of these off with the new nation, the Washington administration, and get through as close to modern times as he can. Um for instance, today he's teaching about Vietnam. We didn't get to Vietnam, I'm sure. Right, Vietnam, the whole of history, because we got up to the beginning of the writing of this as far as we could get. Not a terribly interesting coverage, I want uncovered, but we should have a basic understanding of Greek tradition. Vietnam is an important part of our narrative. And so in fact, we're able to understand that material to be deeper. And today, your S. Department of Services stated, read Congress's resolution about Duncan and then a letter from a soldier that he sent before he died in combat. So uh the kind of sources that he finds, something that make it from a lot of resources.
And we have, you know, like twenty-two students in the civics class and every student has a test.
Yeah. And we're.
Pretty high scores, maybe these most of the students.
I haven't heard from my boss yet about whether we're bringing new classes to the board. I think we do that sometime in the winter, but we'll be bringing in AP government for next year. Um we can be a guy for that and then um bring back a different social system, like if you go outside. Um AP associate administrator Menzer is gonna take over next year from Mr. Blatch's position. So what two AP options for interested?
Well, thank you, because I was actually gonna ask the question, not that I actually expected it to already happen, with you being you, but like where did you see that connection actually going to the junior high?
Yeah.
Like, how does it all feed into each other?
Well, everyone's saying, you know.
Already managed to be who, come to Pittsville, start everything and also spend that time and connect. So thank you, that's fantastic.
Well, when Derek and I were right next to each other, of course, we get to spend a lot of time in after school. You know, every day we kind of brief each other how the day went and and stuff like that. And so we were, we were, we were happy because we we made a, there was a a connection. Or he was like, the kids were learning something in U.S. history that I was connecting to the civics and and they saw the connection. Oh, Mr. Denzil taught here, we just, you know, so it was like a good overlap, so we were proud of that.
So I love hearing how this is all falling together like this. I mean, this is the big improvement and I'm really impressed with what you guys are doing. And I guess, boy, you put a bit of work, this is in the right direction.
We we have such, we have such smart kids that and they work hard and they're 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 good to, you know, they're good to work with. And so this, the the senior classes really, so a few groups, so both are probably not. So. We got three months, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move to the district administration.
She'll be on the cloud. Or members. Tenure. Alright, then we can go with that. So the tablet has sent some PCCC updates here. The first one is the school age room, which I was kind of, I had a chuck when I saw the Tetris thing. Um I did not know such a thing existed. It's kind of like, uh they used to have a chapters, what's that, when we were younger?
Connect four.
Connect four? Yeah, well, I just dated myself, didn't I?
They still have them.
Do they really? Those are a lot of silly, uh connect four, I don't remember that. Um they also designed and built polar bear dens with their marsh cones and toothpicks. Next one? So the toddlers are learning about shapes and colors. Um they use the streamers, magnetic shapes, colored shapes on the wall. Um they do their little dance parties and uh when meandering throughout the building on occasion and stuff. I always love to approach life with so much energy and with those kids, I'll tell you. Um and the folks that work in those areas have the patience to sink. Uh the energy is abounding on every day. Next. So the preschool classroom, uh they're using their their senses to identify different Christmas-related objects. So this is, this is from last month. Um and they use the sense of smell, they're responding pine trees and hot chocolate in the the cupboard, candy canes. Sounds, shaking containers that had different things in the trampoline, as well as in the container from the shaking them. Um and then tasting, black licorice, I can't figure that one out yet. For those that like black licorice, I never understood that, but um and then stamping with the Christmas things. And the infants are working on their five motor skills, uh pushing snowballs through a cardboard snowman and then smooshing the paint, they're painting pictures of snowflakes. Alright, winter sports update. So our wrestling team over Christmas break competed in a sixty-eighteen invite in Oshkosh, uh tough matches. Um and uh comment was is that the kids got better at the end of the day than when they started. And that's the reason for going to those big tournaments and wrestling up in competition. They had two close duels last week. Um they won the duel against Amherst. They're two and one with two big conference patches coming up this week. Uh Ed Hall gets Bonwell in Wyoming, Fremont, and they have it on one of the next, because I think Thursday is the youth wrestling night, if I remember correctly. There's some photos. Yep, Thursday the twelfth is the youth night in the high school gym. I will not say I'm any, really, just so you know, that was my master plan to somehow get sports back in the old gym. I didn't mean for it to go that far, I mean, but just so you know, but uh.
Do you have his last one?
No. If you can't laugh about it, what are you gonna do? Uh the girls' basketball team currently eight and two, um beat all the bankrupt last week, undefeated. They're three and all in the conference and uh Wild Rose tomorrow night. So.
You're so funny watching.
It's a nice form of the fridge roll.
Thank you.
Oh, we'll be following, yeah, handing the cookie to her. Uh youth thank for the girls' program was last week. So some pictures of the kids getting their poster signed and uh getting in form in the tunnel and then being they were, the kids were announced to get to run out to the court too, which was a good experience for them. The Panther Boys started eight and one, um couple of tough games over the last week and uh they're still sitting at eight-three overall. I know it last week, Sam, I think when I looked, ranked eighth in the state. I was, yeah. Boy, I didn't, I didn't mean to. So uh trying to get back on track again, it's weird. The thing about basketball, it's a long season, there's a lot of ups and downs during the course of the season. You're never as good as you didn't care when you were little, you're never as bad as you didn't care when you were little. Slow and steady. Next. You see, I have some pictures on here? Has it froze off? Nope. Hold on, we gotta reset. That was a technical, but you can. Hey, boys, Sam, boys, youth thank for the boys is next week, eight January fourth, January twenty-first. Who's named January twenty-first? Um so uh R.C. gym update. So I'm gonna have Dan and Pam jump in here with relevant information. Uh I will say this, the uh the situation, it happened. Uh, I will say this, the, uh, the situation, it happened, uh, it was handled expediently by Dan and his crew. Um, they got the necessary people in here to avoid further damage. And, um, when things are all said and done, here effectively in about five and a half weeks, we're going to have a new gym floor.
That's what a two thousand gallons of the water looks like under your gym floor.
They, they were still finding water last week in crevices that was still half inch deep on the far end of the gym is the floor, so. Cause Dan, I think you really want to explain that, Ken, or you're the star front, because of how the floor is recessed, the water's going to find the lowest point and.
Yeah, the volleyball, uh, inserts that are in the floor actually held the most water. Some of the stain, the ones actually filled up with a couple of inches of water or right around them, there was about a half inch, those are the lowest points in the floor. But that water, once it migrates, it gets underneath, the way our floor was laid out is we get the concrete, a vapor barrier, and then two layers of plywood in the gym floor. The water got between the vapor barrier and the, and the concrete and the floor. And that's what caused the copying, is the board started to delaminate.
And it was copying by Monday.
By Monday afternoon.
Noon, there was already copying on that. That was the day after it occurred, the leak.
And we had the water cleaned up that morning, we had the support too late.
So this is the same pipe that's broke twice before, right?
Once before, since I've been here. And all we can figure out is that there was a possible freeze up. We don't know for sure, because by the time we got here, the water was flowing. And that just picked the weakest point to blow apart.
So is it possible to insulate or are we insulating?
Um, we're looking at, for this summer, I'm looking to get some people in here. The design of the building, I don't know who the company was back then. And we questioned this, we had Keller look at it when Keller was here too. And the recommendation is that we put some kind of spray foam or something, so we're going to try and figure out if we can work that out.
So the pipe actually burst right outside of the conference, like outside of the fitness center, but it's the gym that got flooded?
It was right outside the, the fitness center, right above in the ceiling here, there's a, that's a hollow ceiling, right there, it's, you know, now. And it held the water for a little while, but then you can just watch it. When we looked at the feet, you could see when it comes down and it just goes down really slow, it's just bent everything. There was so much weight up there.
And there's like waves, cause as soon as that falls, you can see the waves going down the hall.
As far as we can tell, it was close to sixty-eight hundred gallons of water that came out of it, into all ours.
The only damage was the gym floor though, everything else was the same as before?
Everything else was, uh, the drywall right there had to be replaced and jumped. And we lost that, an unseater panel, which was brand new in that project we were working on, so that'll be covered. And I think we had one emergency, like the biggest pain was all the ice that was all in front. I was trying to get that cleared up, because I thought we had gained that week, but obviously we didn't. But it was just, yeah, the rest of the floors are fine.
Fitness center's fine?
Was it?
Fitness center's fine?
Yeah, I had that carpet dried out that afternoon, or started drying it out that afternoon, by the next day it was dried out. It was only that first, maybe ten to fifteen feet that got it. Most of that water, like I said, either went out the door or out into the admin lobby and into the gym. And that gym is for lowest points, so it kind of works its way that way.
But not in the PSC at all?
No.
It must be higher.
No, I, the block wall actually held that water from getting in there. We did have some water over that way. Uh, we were, like I said, we were pretty fortunate. And as for the vinyl tile and stuff like that, those floors, when we take and strip them, we usually flood those floors anyways. If they were done properly, when they were installed or they adhered them real good, you will never have that tile float up unless the water's pushing up from underneath. It's sealed for the most part.
The, the main issues, Dan, were obviously the wood, the company and the wood, but then the cavity underneath the gym floor that's filled up, because there would have been no way to effectively dry it out. So.
You could have had a lot of mold and stuff if you didn't get to it, get it out of there. And I talked to, the newer floor that's going in actually has something to do with moisture, maybe not to that extent, but they actually have a fan system that goes under the floor and it draw, it put the, the baseboard up behind the bleachers and it will draw air in whenever they need to. And it'll blow air under that to dry it out, and the fact that it senses moisture doesn't, it will, it will sense moisture.
So our, our gym floor, so it's obviously constructed in a way that allows water to get a little surface. It was.
Uh, right by the doorways where the, the thresholds were, that's how the water went underneath, because there's a gap in the floor right there and that threshold covers that gap. So it went under the thresholds and under the floor. And that's where it all came from.
We were fortunate that Lee Garros came in and we did, and we even discovered it, because who knows, there's several other hours of.
So if that was, it was that, that was constructed that way for a reason originally?
Well, they're all considered floating, any gym floor, the newer gym floors and anything that's been built in the last twenty, thirty, forty years, I don't, they're all floating floors. Even our high school gym, which has got the older floor, is a floating, natural floating floor.
It gives you that spring.
Yeah.
It's what allows Sam to do it.
So we have rubber batteries, you can see that's giving spring.
Well, Mark, that is to me to request that the new floor, we can give it installed to increase, whether it can be about four inches per, per, I think if we give you some. But it, it, it's probably going to decide this, the floor is built to, for that, kind of a cushion maybe spring.
And the newer style floor that we're having put in is actually, it's kind of a cross pattern with lattice underneath, so it actually allows the floor itself to breathe a little bit better. It's just newer technology, twenty-two years old, so.
And we'll be meeting Wednesday, we're, we're meeting Wednesday already of this week to discuss.
Tomorrow, Tuesday, right? I have a Tuesday on my list.
Whatever you have, it is correct.
Yeah. Uh, Thur, Thursday, the new floor will actually be delivered. I already had that company, he ordered it the day I called him. And it'll be here Thursday, it has to acclimate the temperature, so we'll start building the soft floor after that. And right now, I'm currently, I just got the lift today and all the lights, I'm going to be replacing all the gym lights. One day we see, so that should give us some energy savings.
But the gym floor does not, has to be, we need to get that to them, because it's progressing quickly enough that the new design needs to be kind of hashed out, so that they can.
We're working on it, it's tomorrow at three fifteen.
So my understanding is, is this floor was up for renovation in the next couple of years, anyways?
We were past where we should have been for re-sanding and refinishing. Cause what, what normally happens is they recommend every twelve to fifteen years, you should take a floor, completely sand it, repaint it, refinish it. You're not getting rid of the floor, you're just redoing the top layer.
Dan, what's the approximate cost on that? Would you go for?
He said anywhere from forty-three to fifteen thousand, somewhere in there, because you're doing a redesign and everything.
And then at some point, Chris, you'll get to it with a floor, with those wood floors, I know, because we went through this in my former district, is where you can't sand anymore. You get to a certain point where you're, you'll get to, you can't do that anymore, then you have to do a floor replacement eventually, so this.
This would have been our, it would have been our second or third, I don't know for sure, but I think it's our second.
What's the, the new floor, life expectancy on a new floor, before we'd have to look at replacement?
It could be thirty years.
Now, we're not just replacing damaged areas, we're replacing everything.
Everything but bleachers. You guys want new bleachers, then we have to have a different conversation. And it's eighteen months to order them.
Yeah, in fact, we're just, but I don't know if this is where you're going, but we always try to see, all right, this happened, what's the bright side? The bright side is, is through our insurance deductible, we're going to have a approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollar floor replaced through a, twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. That would have cost us within the next year to forty-five thousand dollars minimum to sand and refinish.
And then twenty-five hundred dollar deductible is everything, is still available?
The whole action, all of this.
Highs under the bleachers.
So we just.
And then it gets replaced also.
Yep, as soon as the new floor, what they do is they'll start to build the new floor inside, and then they take the bleachers and move it on to the new floor. Get rid of that, finish that, and then a bleacher comp, uh, people doing the floor will move the bleachers out, but they will not put them back, because you have to align them just right and do everything. So a bleacher company will be coming out to do that for us.
And we've had no issues with the insurance companies?
No, they've been very cooperative, just like everybody else in the industry, they actually bumped us up to get the, uh, process going faster. Their adjuster showed up and they didn't think he would be here for weeks.
And they said they revealed the company other, for gym floors?
It was the twentieth call that day.
For gym floors, really?
That morning when I called the stocker, we were thinking.
Not gym floors, but just broken, uh, pipes, that mean.
Well, I'm twenty-one below the year, right?
So it's, it's been a pain to have it happen, the timing where it occurred here during the season. I mean, ideally, you know, you don't have frozen pipes in the fall or the spring, but when you're able to have the outdoors, uh, we find the classes have had to, uh.
When I called my flooring contractor, they did, they do exactly.
It's always on all time. It, it is. And, and if everything progresses correctly here, you guys will be playing for the playoffs, and we have a regular gym floor, but there's the gym here, is what Stocker's telling us, so. But then it was very.
There's a process to it all, so.
Right, so anything can happen, but they did, the biggest concern was the supply chain issues, and they got out of getting us the floor, the flooring immediately. Uh, they worked with the insurance company and Dan to make sure, listen, we're processing, I'm going to get you a flooring order to make sure we don't end up not having flooring, which would have been the big hole up this, this material, so.
And they said it's nationwide, with that storm front that went through, they had, they've had problems from east, west coast to east coast. It was bad for everybody, from what I understand. Whether it was tornadoes down south or the freezing stuff that we got.
So we'll be adding some agility ladders and dots, so that Pam created a document for the high end staff, for the coaches, Mark, uh, Dan, to brainstorm ideas. Were we doing the floor, what, what would you like to, what do we need for striking, what do we need for additional things? So the newest thing is, is you add your agility dots and agility ladders right into your floor design. So you're going to have to lay, lay those down or tape them and other components like that and stuff. So taking the opportunity to kind of do a, a reset, then, all right, this happened, what do we, what do we need to get from the floor, so.
Graphic designer, I think, tomorrow at three fifteen, should mute those.
Okay, Dean, are you going to stain or? Before? I don't know, that'll be discussed, I'll be graphic designer person tomorrow.
Passed, the, uh, floor finish that we use is an oil modified, and over time it'll give that color to it, but I think it comes, it's just a really light color at first.
It's just no, it seems to be stained now. And do it the way they do outside of the lane and they do that.
Yeah, it depends on what we're doing, but I can tell you the insurance covers what was existing, so we have to be very careful on our modifications.
So the process to be sped up at all, we just did the basketball lines now and everything else later or not, is that not the same time?
Do you, do you want to sand it up back down again?
Cause you have to save the back.
No, you'd have to take that finish off, there's seven to ten quotes on that right now.
And it won't take very, like, once they start, like, in the, doing the striking stuff, it's not going to take very long.
You'll know, it'll be undecipherable, it'll slow. Yep. And I think some of those are actually, I don't want to say for sure, but I thought some of those were a final graphic that they put down and go over. I don't know for sure. I've never done this before, I'm, I'm learning as I go.
We'll find out tomorrow with the graphic designer.
I wish I had more to tell you about how it's actually done, but.
Well, we'll get an update as we're going through the process.
My, my resources just to get you your information. Thanks for your hard work, man.
Thank you, well, thank you, I mean, well, to you and Pam, I know you folks had to come in.
I didn't come in, I was on the phone, but.
They were still working.
I, I, yeah.
Right.
Well, I mean, I, I looked at the footage and saved the footage today, so the ceiling came down at about four twenty, Garros got here a quarter after five. Had he not gotten here in less than an hour, I don't know how quickly after Dan got here, you guys were just a few minutes after. But actually, I mean, to get the water.
Jason called me, I was there five minutes later.
Yeah, I mean, it's just amazing, I mean, had the center not been open?
Yeah.
And, you know, we, building checks and stuff were done, someone would have noticed the water outside eventually, probably.
But who knows? So the building check was done on Sunday, I verified.
Yeah, and I have footage of that, so if the insurance asks and stuff.
I did make, I did make my guy feel bad when he walked in, he said, boy, I said, you really should be doing, I'm not doing your building check.
Oh, he actually even kind of walked around and looked for that corner, so we're all good, we're all good.
The other compliment is just how well we can be, really, really getting it open right away and letting people know and just, um, you know, you've done a great job of that, so thank you.
Thank you, yes. Okay, now exciting stuff, school calendar update. So we're in that, the school calendar season, so when we're coming through, um, I wanted to talk about kind of just the basic parameters of, of the school calendar, uh, calendar, and then kind of the process we've engaged in, what we're going to be doing over the next week. Uh, anticipating, bringing the calendar for approval for the February meeting, for the board to review, uh, and discuss. So, um, if you don't have a waiver in Wisconsin, you can't start prior to September first. You can apply for a waiver, there's various things you can list for a reason for starting prior to September first. If you apply for the waiver, you don't have to use it, it just gives you that flexibility if you wanted to do that. Next year, February, for, our September first is on Friday, this year it was on Thursday. So what we had effectively was students came Thursday and September first, this year for the first day of, uh, class. So, uh, the past several years, uh, the school district has concluded classes by Memorial Day. Uh, we have to fit a hundred and eighty-eight professional staff days and a hundred and seventy-four student contact days to build those into that calendar. And, and within that frame, um, the current calendar, the one we did this year, it would have been past two years, because I think both calendars were, were approved together, so we did two-year approval. Began with eight professional learning days for the staff with no students here, and then the students came back on Thursday, September first. The requirements through DPI are minutes, uh, and, uh, broken into hours here is four hundred and thirty-seven hours of direct instruction for kindergarten. And then you have to have at least a thousand and fifty for grades one through six, and then a thousand, uh, one, a thousand one hundred and thirty-seven for grade seven through twelve. Lunches cannot be counted towards those, but you can count recess and passing time for students between classes in those minutes. So effectively, DPI has a worksheet you fill out every year, we have to go through it, it says, subtract your lunch period, add in any teacher, or subtract teacher in-service days, and you fill this out, and at the bottom it gives you total minutes, ten hours. And your hours for your high school students typically are the ones that, your, your lower levels typically do not have trouble being in those hours. It's always the high school that you go off with the requirements, they need to be over one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven hours of direct people contact. When you hear about snow days being built in, that's whatever hours are built in. So if you do your math and it comes out to one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven hours of direct instruction, that means we effectively have one hundred hours of additional wiggle room, if you were to have things happen where you did not have direct instruction. And, and that's how you calculate those snow days. And some districts will build in more of those snow days than others. And honestly, it really shouldn't be as complicated it is, but it's a very daunting, the, the sheet to calculate your minutes is very confusing. It shouldn't be that difficult, because they'll tell you, you can't count lunch. However, you know, Rod is a great example with the high school schedules, effectively, the students have the opportunity for like, uh, uh, high school students can go, they go shoot buckets in the gym and stuff, for the last fifteen to twenty minutes of lunch. So effectively, that would count as recess time, because you're not requiring them to just sit for lunch. So there's a lot of wiggle room with how you can calculate that, but I just, I kind of wanted everybody just kind of a concept of, that's the basis for building a, a calendar. So when you look at that, if you're starting after September first and you're any Memorial Day, the point being, you don't have a lot of wiggle room for what days happen where in there, because if the thing about it is, like a discussion we would have as an administrative team is saying, is it the most productive use of staff time to have eight professional learning days at the beginning year? Would it be better to have some days sprinkled through all full days where they could, uh, collaborate or we can do professional learning opportunities? But the reality is, when you're building in your normal breaks that are in there for holidays and stuff, there's not a lot of wiggle room within the calendar, but there are still things that you can manipulate and use within the calendar. Next slide. So we started this back in December with an administrative team, we reviewed the calendar and kind of discussed priorities, like what are we looking, looking at out of a calendar? You know, what's the ideal calendar? I don't know if such a thing exists, but what you try to do is you try to pick out, um, you know, talking about terms, our terms is how our terms fall. You don't want to have one of your, your quarters, or for Rod, the, the terms where there's a whole bunch more days in one term than the other day. You know, because when you run a term classes, you have a class that has four more days in a, in a term, which means, as far as balancing what the instruction looks like in that term. So we did that, I sent out an email last week to all staff asking for volunteers to join in the staff advisory committee to kind of look at these things and prioritize. What are, what are things that are important to us? Like discussions would be centered around spring break, um, you know, what does it look like for, um, you know, Good Friday and, and if you, the Monday after Easter, if you did spring break before that. There's things like that to just get feedback, you know, and from staff, the feedback would be, how do you, you know, how do you feel about the eight days at the beginning of the school? Cause we would have a little wiggle room, like if, if we bumped back, um, this year, if we started on Friday for next year, September first, we would have one of those days, we could have one less day at the beginning, and we can move one of those days to some time within the school year. Where we would have that big opportunity to kind of do a check in with staff or have large chunks of time available. One of the nice things is having those Wednesdays built in throughout the year. If we didn't have those Wednesday early release periods right now, this would be even more daunting for us to try to work in those days throughout the school year. The Wednesdays help a ton. I'm going to send out a survey, this will be to all PCSD staff, so I, I got nine people volunteered to be on the committee, the advisory committee. And the rest, what I told them is your input is going to be, we're going to send a survey out to all staff, uh, every employee in the district, will be able to get feedback. And then my Friday communication is with, will be one going to families to get family feedback on the calendar. Now, obviously, you're going to get different lenses there from folks, right? What you see from families for priorities is probably going to look different than you see for staff, um, you know, Dan, Dan's guys filled out a survey about that, are going to look at it from the lens of building grounds, like, you know, as far as what kind of timeframes, would you look at those? as far as what kind of timeframes would you look at those professional learning days to begin, get in the buildings, the classrooms ready for, for staff to get in the buildings and stuff like that. So it's nice to have a bunch of different people look at it with a different lens, give feedback, and then we ultimately, what we try to do is we build a calendar based upon what those priorities are from all those stakeholder groups. So, that's kind of the, the premise of the process. We'll follow this, I just put that up there as a visual for you. That's this year's calendar. It's just kind of how it's laid out, how we worked with it. You can see, you know, the in-service days for staff, if you look back in August, list, those were the seven days to be, or the eight days to begin the school year. Any other in-service days are labeled in-service in there. It talks about, uh, parent-teacher conferences are not able to be counted, for minutes, those are, those are non-student hours that occur outside of school day. That counts as that hundred and eighty professional day staff activity. So when you do those two nights in service, they come up to eight hours of, of the hundred and eighty-eight days for professionals. So that's just kind of calendar process in a nutshell. So I just felt like it might be beneficial for us to kind of review that before we see it coming forward in those discussion. Any questions?
Do you want any input from any of us?
You'll have the opportunity to, what, what I would anticipate is certainly at any point during the, the process you can, but when we bring it forward, it won't be foreboded that for, I would wanna bring it forward for the boards of discussing your feedback for, I wouldn't necessarily look into requiring a vote in that same meeting or requesting a vote. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, when, when is it most helpful? I mean, do you want, do you want feedback from us? And then if you do, like, when is it most helpful?
Ultimately, cause you guys are ones to prove with the calendar, so absolutely. What I will do is, I'm gonna be very transparent about the feedback we get back. So like, when I get survey results back from the staff, uh, I'm gonna share that out with everybody. When we need the community feedback back, I'm gonna share that out, we're gonna get that posted so that people know this is what folks are saying. Now, I wanna be clear is that, you know, we might have, you know, uh, it could be sixty, forty, or fifty, eighty, forty-two for, you know, we want this. What I'm gonna ask folks to do is kind of rank things, like how do you feel about, you know, where do you rank these things as important in the schedule to spring break? Having this day, those types of components, um, because there's no way to ask all the questions that need to be asked. It would be impossible to ask every detail. And in reality, you know what most families are gonna say? Yeah, there's a couple of things that are really important, like, I, I like to have, you know, spring break be the week after Easter, whatever it may be. But you know what they're gonna say? It's kind of your job as a school. We want you guys, you guys who are professionals, build the calendar with some input and feedback from, for folks, so. The, the teacher feedback would be really valuable and interesting to get feedback from the staff about how they feel about like where, you know, where the professional learning days fall right now and those types of things, so. But yeah, I would make feedback at any point in the process would be valuable. Okay? That is it.
Okay. We'll move to the consent agenda items, meaning lower certification, a regular in-class assessment from December twelfth, financial status, and hearings.
I need to update the consent agenda.
Any discussion? On the ever say aye, opposed, motion carried. We'll move to discussion action, item D. So these are all second readings. So D, E, F, G, and H are second readings from policies we've looked at last year. I don't believe we made any changes at last year into those policies. Do you want a motion for all of them at the same time or separate?
I feel that we could do them all at the same time.
I'll make a motion to approve policy three forty-three point four, four twenty-three, four twenty-three rule, and four thirty, four thirty-one, and four thirty-one rule. All step and told.
Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move to the first reading to updates to policy four fifty-three point one, emergency nursing services.
These were both submitted by Gina. This is part of the process of us having, having a school nurse at this point. She's been reviewing our, some of our medical policies in the emergency room, so both of I and J were brought forward by Gina.
So are these WAs submitted?
Yes, and, and through Gina, Gina's professional contacts as far as that goes, as far as the medical. But any of the policies we've been forward, we have reviewed through the laws of service.
So these are a couple of questions I have. What happens if something happened to Gina tomorrow? And we don't have a registered nurse? So when I read some of these, first, I don't know, like, are we actually required to do this? Or is it just great policy to have in place because we happen to have a registered nurse? But I just, if we're not required, then it's kind of an enhancement. My question becomes, are we actually, like, creating policy that we now have to do this? And tomorrow something happens to her and she can't be here, and now we're frantically trying to go find an RN because we put this policy in place that we have to?
So we would have, for situations like that, certainly there's gonna be flexibility for, you know, God forbid something were to happen with Gina that she was unavailable for a period of time is, I know one thing right now we've been working on during the entire year is finding a supervising physician. Every, every school nurse, every district needs to have a supervising physician right now, and frankly, folks just don't wanna do it. You need to find a medical doctor that's willing to do that. We've been hunting all year long for, for someone, and I've had several other districts reach out and say, listen, if we're able to, we would certainly be willing to. I don't know if they understood the concept of what it was, but they were offering to share services to be able to do what we need to do, so. If we needed to have someone through, uh, through our health network, temporary authorizing those types of, uh, temporary authorizing those type of things, I think we'd, they'd work. I, I'll be honest with you, Julie, I didn't ask that question. All I know is that this is good practice for us to implement with what we have for services out of Gina right now. And this is one of those cases where Gina, this is what Gina does, and Gina recommended strongly that we follow this process and protocol for, for the, uh, medical services for the policies, so we're following through with that. I can certainly check into that to see what will happen in a situation like that.
It does say in the policy that the medical, it'll be appointed by the district administrator. So I think we would appoint, he would appoint somebody new or give.
And that doesn't have to be a nurse?
Most of those, I was wondering if you're saying nurse or putting some nurse or. Well, prior, we went through, we used, uh, before we wrote Gina down.
It was a sent you ministry technical, I don't know where it ended up at the end, but we have services contracted services that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we need to have an, a nurse, like an RN, check in for special education.
There are some things from Medicaid, no, that we need that person for.
Right, so we have to have that person here, so.
But we did before.
We, as always, we just contracted it up to.
No, she's a R.
Because we had not had anyone interested previously. So anything, what happened to Gina, we could contract services over there.
And my understanding is that the nursing physician is an RN, not necessarily a FSA.
If the position here, there, well, she is an RN, but she can't be the supervising physician. So I'm saying she needs a nurse practitioner or a licensed physician, I believe.
Yes.
Is the DPI language.
Yes, it's RN. It doesn't have to be FSA.
It doesn't have to be a FSA.
So it's.
To me, it doesn't have to be.
Either way, there.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering about a supervising physician from also. Is there any way CISA would help or give guidance or?
Actually, today, just today, Gina got the contact for the, the individual at DPI that oversees supervising physicians. I emailed her this morning, and she emailed back and said, I'm on it. I'm gonna see what we can do to try to shape the treaty for you, so. So that's, that's who we reached out to today. We had called, I reached out to all the other school districts in the area. I reached out to, uh, Aspiris. We, we have gone through our.
In Marshfield.
In Marshfield, Marshall Clinic system, and everybody that Gina had contacts with. She asked whether we wanted to do this, and we just didn't get persons that would be interested in serving that role for us. So, so we're hoping that having the person at DPI that helps to receive this, and she was pretty confident. She said, I'm on it, and I'll, we'll see what we can find for you, so.
Or any other discussion or questions?
I don't know what makes a difference now, but on the, uh, if needed, the general emergency care procedures. Just a matter of wording, I know that St. Joseph's Hospital, which is the Marshall clinic, so.
Where's it then, Chris?
Eight, uh, it's ninety-eight five.
Good catch.
Yeah, can you make do of that? Thank you.
And it may change against them, so.
Okay, any other questions or changes? Are we able to moving this forward? Okay, and we move to the first reading of policy of updates to policy four fifty-three point four, just the education policy. This one really relates to, um, other types of non-prescription, uh, food supplements?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that was Gina specifically brought that, it's because we're seeing an increase in, in those types of things, like these homeopathic type things, the aromatherapy type things, that we didn't have anything covering the administration of those things, so it's just kind of.
So I do have a question. Say we have a student who has needs to take some sort of digestive enzyme, like lactase or something, they have lactose intolerance. They have to take, like, a lactate or something before they have lunch. They're not supposed to have anything in their lockers. Is this saying that the office can't dispense that?
That, that's not the way I understand it.
Okay.
Like, did you see a specific reference of that?
No, it's just saying, like, food supplements or natural products, if it's not a, a doctor that's prescribed it and it's not FDA approved, that they can't, they won't dispense it, but my question is, I mean, there are plenty of kids that have certain needs that maybe they're using something like that, and that would be, uh, I think parents would have some pretty big concerns if they're gonna have milk at lunch and they can't take something that has some digestive.
Let me, let me follow up specifically with Gina, and I'll, I'll get back to you. I don't, my, my gut reaction would be that we're not going to prohibit that from happening, especially if it's for me to, a student who's lactose intolerant, I don't confirm with.
Right.
With Gina.
And if a child has, um, special education and some special needs, something could be written into their IEP that would supersede this policy? I mean, cause there are some researched, like, I just didn't think about you saying no aromatherapy from the perspective that there are some, I mean, I can see how that could get written into some. Would it absolutely not be allowed, or could an IEP trump this if it was right for the kid?
I guess I'd have to do a little research on that as well. I would say in most regards, on the special education standpoint, especially from healthcare perspective, if it's something that's needed, we have any IEP, it's something we would have to follow legally. I guess it'd be interesting to see how it would work out if we have a policy that kind of goes against what we have in the IEP.
Sure, I mean, we support a number of people that, I mean, there's a lot of stuff here that would, that, that is part of kind of how they function every day, that's just been excluded. That I'm okay if it has to go through the IEP process and we're taking a really, um, close look at how that is, but if this actually would, like, not allow that in that process, and that's what was best for the child, like, I guess I would just want to think about that from that perspective. And not just aroma, like, there's a whole list of things that, um, you know, and some of them, you know, right.
Favorit.
I mean, we've got the list of more proven to be helpful, and then maybe thought to be helpful, but.
I think that was the premise behind it, is not to necessarily exclude those that are identified as helping, is to, is to avoid having just this kind of, we're gonna, we're gonna plethora of things and throw things against the wall. It's to at least have some monitoring of what's being run, because I mean, an example I can give you, like, with the aromatherapy piece of, being, you could have a student in the classroom that has severe allergies or something that that could impact. So it's just a process to go through of. But certainly, if there were identified needs for any student that were medical needs, we're not going to restrict, um, whatever that may be. But Matt can follow up on that, and I'll follow up with Gina about some of those other questions, which are, it's a clarification. And I'll, with this being the first reading, I'll, I'll give a clarification. I'll email you guys.
Any other questions or? All right, we will move to the state convention and assembly resolution.
Okay, so updates, uh, on the state convention, we will be, um, so we're gonna have to make a decision about driving. I didn't want to say that right away. We need some volunteers.
I would drive, but I can't even tell him, I just, I.
It would be Tuesday evening, this is.
I'm actually planning to drive myself, because I can't go till Wednesday morning. But I'll be there before it starts Wednesday morning. But I plan to come down Wednesday morning.
So who does that leave then?
And of course, I'm coming, uh, Wednesday.
Looks like I'm gonna go take a motorcycle. I, I'm down to one vehicle currently, because we have one in the shop right now, so I can't, my family without a vehicle. So I'm relying on someone. No. Well, here, here's what the deal is. Effectively, we could have trucked a vehicle, but we have, like, PLCs too, and stuff. There's stuff going on. Next week, then, we wanted to leave the school vans to the staff for things that will go on rather than locking up for four days when we're really, once we get there.
So I plan to be first thing Wednesday morning, or I could go really late Tuesday night.
Yeah, because then I can't be until at least.
And I plan to come, I have to come back Thursday night, so when it's all, like, I won't be there Friday morning. So if that fits with someone else either coming or going, I'm happy to let you.
We'll, we'll make it work. We'll just give you, give you email and figure that, please, so. So on the assembly resolutions, I sent you, it was in the board package, and I sent you the copy in the twenty. There's a lengthy amount of resolutions, so this is what, what I kind of proposed in my email was, uh, Mary Ann is our voting delegate, so Mary Ann kind of wanted some feedback from the board, so what I would ask is, I'm gonna try to set up a talk with Mary Ann for later, then we, we'll meet for her and I sit down. If any of you have any thoughts about any of those resolutions in that packet, you can either share them with me or directly with Mary Ann, and then we'll discuss it, and we. I certainly hope we're all gonna vote yes for our own resolution.
He's gonna say, that's the one that is known, he does.
Number six.
So, so that was my, my thoughts on how we would get Mary Ann some feedback, so she kind of makes tell the direction, who wants to go with what we're gonna issue a resolution.
I put it in the mall, my little notes. So, yes, it'll be good to meet, and I refer to Karen from, um, Fox.
So you can either share with me or directly with Mary Ann if you want, if you have any thoughts on any particular resolution. Okay?
Thank you. Anything else we can mention? Okay. And we'll do open enrollment space availability recommendations for twenty-three, twenty-four.
We show solid argument, no questions.
You just have to do separate motions for special evidence.
I'll make a motion to approve the following number of spaces available for open enrollment in regular education classroom for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school. Four K fifteen, kindergarten twelve, grade one ten, grade two ten, grade three ten, grade four ten, grade five ten, grade six ten, grade seven ten, grade eight ten, grade nine fifteen, grade ten nine, grade eleven eight, grade twelve three, for school board policy four twenty-three.
Any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve following number of spaces available in open enrollment in special education services for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, four K through grade twelve, speech, language, and following spaces available for ID and UEP services, easily grade two.
Two.
Two, two, grade three, five.
Two.
Grade three to five.
Two, three to five, two, grade six to eight, one, grade nine to twelve, three.
How's that? Any discussion?
Any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the four oh three B vendor.
Um, as you saw, I forwarded the communication with Mary Ann. This was, uh, staff had requested. Horace Mann is an additional vendor option and Kevin would explain too, as long as we have two staff members participating.
Correct the policy statement that you think are participating, like they retired Horace staff person. So I typically, like with, um, Ameriprise, they've just kind of gotten started. So I kind of like a two-year holding period, I guess, to see if you get another person. Oh, we would have to consider changing that policy, I guess.
And Horace Mann specializes. They handle a lot of educational.
Horace Mann is very public employee friendly. I mean, they do a lot of programs, they begin of school year maps to help staff with student debt in the area.
And they give us cupcakes.
Or maybe.
And they give us cupcakes.
And cupcakes. We got, yeah, we got homemade cupcakes. Yes. They actually ended up funding, um, two donors choose, a hundred and fifty dollars each as a service to the.
Does it cost us?
Not at all. It's just, um, another avenue for our staff members to contribute money to.
And what originally that was, a couple of staff members who actually mentioned that they were interested in.
Or they are, you resource them for other investments.
Sure. I would, um, move to approve Horace Mann's findings as an additional four oh three B vendor for the district. We can, in January of twenty twenty-three.
How's that? Any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Marshall Clinic Health Services, drug screening, T V risk assessment.
So we previously did not have a vendor doing the service for our services, just adding one as an additional service.
Did we do the services?
No. Um, what happened was we had Marshall Clinic Services for a long time and then they switched to combine or drop the service or whatever it was. And then, um, we looked for another place like within an hour to do it. Nobody did. We still had an interim policy where we can drug assessment that we have to drive someone to Wassa or something like that. But this is just close at home. They reached out to us and they were restructuring their employee R services and they were adding this backend. The T V assessment piece is we used to be required to do T V testing for our staff and now it's an assessment. Gina can do part of the T V assessments, but they need to be done by, you know, someone else as well. So we can get that service through them. If Gina in our supervisory position can't do it.
I see what you mean.
I would move to approve Marshall Clinic as the district's drug screening and T V risk assessment after our first services provided for the remainder of the calendar year through December three first name, twenty twenty-three, around, on a yes meeting basis.
I'm sitting.
Any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the legislative report.
I don't have anything.
They're, they raised their hand and they're signed it. And I think they're going to start getting really busy. Oh, you were there.
I was on it.
Excellent. Oh, very cool. Yeah, I think it's, uh, I think it's going to be a busy year in the, you know, it's got some legislature because it is a budget year. And the governor has the budget address scheduled for, uh, I believe it's Wednesday, February fifteenth. It is. So stay tuned.
Okay. Any public comments, Deb? And I want to entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
Wow, entertain a wonderful, trying to, trying to. All right. Started crying at. On favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.